Good afternoon. Welcome to the Special Committee of the Whole Meeting Thursday, May the first, 2025. I would like to call this meeting to order at 1:04 PM and acknowledge that the Sunshine Coast Regional District is within the territories of the Shishaw Nation and Sko-Homish Nations. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us. Thank you, people in the gallery, for coming. My name is Justin Gaddias. I'll be chairing this meeting today, and Director Toth will be the vice chair. We are here to discuss the Shishaw Nations Reservoir Project, which is an important initiative that supports the long-term water security for the region. And this very unique project reflects the strong and growing collaboration between the Shishaw Nation and the Sunshine Coast Regional District. And so we're pleased to have Jasmine Paul and Debbie Hensby here to present on the status of the project. We do recognize that there are still some unknowns and some technical questions that need to be addressed before any public approval process can take place. What we do want to do today through the presentation and the subsequent staff report is to bring together all the information that we have so far. So it's clear, it's accessible, and it's easy to find as we move forward together on this project. All right, we do have an agenda before us, as my vice chair is reminding me. So we need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. And that's moved. Do I have a second or? I have a second or. Any discussion comments? Everybody's good? All in favor? Perfect. Okay, so first off, we do have a presentation. We have Jasmine Paul, who is the Strategic Advisor and Negotiator for the Shishaw Nation, and Debbie Hensby, Lower Crown Project Sponsor and Shishaw Nation. And I will let you run with it.
Great. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for having us today, and we're excited to be here to update you on the Lower Crown Reservoir and the progress that we've made over the last number of months. I'm going to start off by giving some background on the project, and then Debbie will follow up with some of the current information about where we're at. So the Lower Crown Reservoir, the work on it started a number of years ago now and was instigated out of the 2022 drought. And since that time, we've really brought together governments on the Sunshine Coast, as well as the federal and provincial government, to bring this project together. And so this is a collaboration between the Government of Canada, our primary funder, the Province of British Columbia, who is also providing some funding, the Sunshine Coast Regional District, District of Seashell Town of Gibsons, and the Heidelberg Materials, where the Lower Crown Reservoir will be situated. So this is an innovative project. It's one of the first of its kind in Canada and a representation of what is possible when we all work together. So the project objectives. Following the drought, we all came together as governments on the Sunshine Coast to talk about water and how do we do things differently? How do we solve the ongoing challenge that is in front of us? And through that, we developed a shared water vision, which has been endorsed by Shishak Nation, the District of Seashell Town of Gibsons, and it is included in the Sunshine Coast Regional District's draft water strategy. So that vision really talks to the importance of us working together as neighbors, as partners, to really shift the situation in a fundamental way, in ways that decrease water use, that address leaks, and leverage relationships that we have here to fundamentally change the situation and provide what residents on the Sunshine Coast need, which is water for everyone. It also requires us to really think about our mindsets and the way in which we're using water, and a lot is being worked on to shift that throughout the community, thanks to everybody's good efforts. Oh, and I should say, please stop me at any time if anyone has any questions, of course. So through this history over the last number of years, we have received a lot of support for this project, both, of course, at the local level, where this project came together between governments, and it's really this profound new collaboration, and first of its kind on the Sunshine Coast, and through other governments and meeting with the federal and provincial officials, we've had profound support, as well as from other indigenous governments through the Union of B.C. Indian Chiefs. And what is really fantastic about this is that the province has, over these number of years, provided support for a feasibility study and, more recently, for developing engineering and other aspects of the project. And then, more recently, in the last number of months, the federal government came in and did support our major funding application. The reason we were successful, and one of the things that we did, was apply to the Disaster Mitigation and Adaptation Fund from the federal government to support the construction of two reservoirs, including the Lower Crown Reservoir. And our logic for that was a number of things. This project is incredibly unique, as I've said, but it meets a whole bunch of strategic goals from both local, provincial, and federal agencies. So it fits within the SCRD's climate action plan, as well as our shared vision and values at the local level. Provincially, it fits in with the Dripa mandates and Shared Path with Indigenous people in addressing reconciliation and building a better future together. It enhances an equity-informed approach. It addresses ongoing health issues. Of course, access to water is a profound health issue. It promotes a nature's base solution. This is, the Lower Crown Project in particular, as being constructed within an existing mine site, has very minimal impacts on the environment and is a unique project in that way, where we're claiming an existing industrial site and making it into something profoundly useful for all residents of the Sunshine Coast. Of course, that means we have limited additional emissions, and it's a proactive approach. We will be able to store water for a long period of time and use it in the summer months and store it during those wet winter months. Federally, of course, it also aligns with the federal strategy around indigenous reconciliation, climate change, and climate justice. It's also, of course, a proactive approach, and we maximize benefits while avoiding future harm. So we applied together in 2023 for, through the Disaster Mitigation and Adaptation Fund, which was a large fund put aside, $3.4 billion, set aside by the federal government to deal with climate change challenges, including droughts. And that's where we were able to apply. Through this funding source, 40% for municipalities was available, and 100% for indigenous governing bodies was available. So we, of course, as Shishak Nation, in a unique position as a self-governing nation, was able to, working with our SCRD partners, apply for this funding and therefore receive significantly more than municipalities have available to them. So just a reminder, the Lower Crown Reservoir, as you can see, is within the Heidelberg Mine Site and just adjacent to the existing water treatment plant there and adjacent to Chapman Creek, but far enough away that there will be no impacts on Chapman. And certainly, this is a unique opportunity to create, you know, 800,000 cubic meters of storage of water and pump it into the water treatment plant at the necessary times when we're having some droughts and continue the cycle. So it's a renewable resource, as it were, and a very unique opportunity. So what did we apply for? We initially applied for $132 million, hoping to get slightly more for the water treatment plant. We were successful in receiving $117.2 million. Now, I will just be very clear for everybody that we have preliminary approval for that funding. So it's available to us, but we have a number of hurdles that we need to, and steps that we need to take in order for that funding to be made available. We unfortunately will not be getting a big check. There won't be a giant check we all get to stand in front of and take a photo. That's not how this works. We will get invoices, many of them, and we will submit them to the federal government, and they will, if they agree, pay them. So that's unfortunate. I was looking forward to the big check, but here we go. It is still an incredible opportunity. It is the most funding, as I understand it, provided in British Columbia and a very significant portion of the overall funding allocated across the country. There was strong federal and provincial support for this in such a way that, you know, this project made considerable attention to those important funders, and here we are. It's an incredible accomplishment that this funding has been available to our little community. And we know other communities like Merritt and Abbotsford, who have also suffered very significantly under new climate change challenges, also applied to this fund, and were unsuccessful. But here we are with our unique partnership, and we have funding available to us. So I'm going to hand it over to Debbie for an update.
Okay, so when we applied for this funding was in 2023, and I don't know about you, but prices have gone up. And also, we did, we started collaborating more on how are we going to operate it and working with SCRD and their technical team and making sure that we had enough money. So Lower Crown, we put it in, is 22.4 million. Things have gone up. We've added other considerations, which I believe we'll go through, that took it to 33, so we have a difference of $10 million. So we have, within UBCM, funding, preliminary approval for some of this funding, but it's in contingent on all the funding, and in DRIF, which closes June 30th, would make up the difference of that funding. One of these things with federal government, they'll give you the money, and they never give you more. It's, that's it, right? There's some misunderstanding that you can go back and ask for more, and that's just not an opportunity. The second reservoir is 84.8 million. It's a much larger reservoir. It's at a very preliminary stage of engineering. So we need to do a whole lot of work on the second reservoir, but it's farther out, right? We want to get the Lower Crown. We'll probably learn lots of lessons and be even more efficient on the second reservoir. The second reservoir, though, needs a water treatment plant upgrade. So we have preliminary work on the water treatment plant upgrade, and because it's only funded 40%, different than the First Nation, Shishaw Nation owning the asset, the capital cost is only funded for 40%, and SCRD will cover the remainder. We have been busy since this happened, and Jasmine mentioned the hurdles we have to do. It's really an interesting, I call it chicken and egg. You want us to do all this, but you won't give us any money. We had some UBCM funding left that we've been using to get through some of these hurdles. We've been putting additional funding proposals into UBCM, which I talked to in the provincial government, and DRIF. The feasibility study is done. This is only on Lower Crown, though. Okay, so I'm just going to talk about that. We did the engineering. We worked with SCRD on a draft water license application, which I'm sure REMCO will tell you a lot about in the next presentation. We worked with Heidelberg to do a draft mine permit. So what happens is we have to remove it from being under Heidelberg and move it back to being under the nation. But because it is a mine permit, we can do a lot of work while things are moving along. We had to do a greenhouse gas emissions study. That's a critical thing, a critical piece for the federal government, which we recently submitted. We had to set in an environmental assessment. Scope change, because we, if you remember, we talked about Water Line as a second. That one turns out to not work, so we had to put a scope change as soon as we were awarded it for an alternative reservoir site. We also initiated ourselves, called a contaminant pathway study. What we heard from many people is, what about the landfill being so close? What about the biosolid trees? So we went forward and have started this, it's called a contaminant pathway study, but really, it's answering the question, does the landfill leach into this? Does the biosolids? And that's something we heard in our preliminary discussions with the SCRD and the public at large. So we thought, let's just get that answered. So that study is almost finished. I'm going to talk about funding. That was more technical. We're going to talk about funding. There's quite a bit of stuff we need to do for funding. I'm just going to talk about what we have to do for DMAP. We have to create a communications plan. It's kind of funny when you're reading through their agreements. It only talks about two subcommittees. One's a communications subcommittee, right? And one's just a project subcommittee. Nothing else. It was kind of, so they expect a very good communication plan. We have to engage with the environmental assessment agencies and make sure and qualify that there's no assessment needed. Now, when we talk about the alternative reservoir, there might be more of a need, but because this is a disturbed site, we're in good shape there. The greenhouse gas emissions study, we've sent it in. We have to wait for approval. And then there's this thing called the contribution agreement. As you all know, government will announce things, and then they'll send you the agreement later. I'm sure that's never happened to you, but that's how it works. So that, even though it was announced early in the year, the agreement didn't reach us till, like, February. We started going through the agreement, and of course, the election happened, right? So we can only move so far with the agreement. This contribution agreement is a large agreement, but we have even more to do. We have to make sure that the public really understands the project, and we get the nation and the public to approve this project, right? It's been kind of, you know, even around, people say, Debbie, what's happening with the project? I'm like, wow, we still got lots of things to do before we get to talk about the project. We have to develop a relationship agreement and a land lease between the Seashell Nation and SCRD. We have to confirm again, right? Prices change, operating and capital budgets. We've been working a lot on the operating budget. We have to have an engagement plan and complete that engagement plan with the Seashell members in parallel. Develop an engagement plan and complete it with the SCRD constituents. That will both lead us to a public approval process. We need to develop a public approval process, the content and the timeline. So there is these stage gates that we still have to go through. But the first thing we have to do is make sure we've done everything that we have the opportunity to get the money. And in parallel, we've been working on the other things. Anything else in there? We've also been working on permitting. Working with the SCRD, we're pretty close to submitting a water license amendment. The SCRD has the water license, and we're amending it. The Mines Act permit, we've got it ready to go, and Heidelberg will submit that when we're ready. We've met with Vancouver Cool Still Health. There's been one or two meetings, but we do have to get construction and operating permits. And of course, we have to get some permits from the SCRD for the development and building permits. So there are some permitting things to do. The water license amendment probably is the one that might take the longest of all of them. So people always say, so when's this going to happen, right? I wish I had that wand. I just showed you on the previous slide. If you flip back, all the work we have to do to be able to start, right? The first thing is we have to secure the money, and then we have to secure the approval. So a lot of work to do. So we'll go back. So this is a unique project, and unique projects come with their own challenges. It takes more time than you expect because no one can fit it in a box. And so when you're talking to people, the nation owning the asset, SCRD operating the asset, these things have not been done anywhere in Canada. So it's the only project of its kind, so it takes a little longer for the first step. So we need to complete. We tried to put some timeframes on these for you, the relationship agreements and land lease. We need that between the Seashell Nation and the SCRD, and that can take three to six months. We need the public approval. public approval process. We need that for the DMAP funds and to construct. And any way we do the public approval, we won't be able to do it faster than three to six months. The DMAP approved finalization, that's all the deliverables we showed you before. We have to finish that, and that includes lawyers, so we know how fast that'll go. And once we have all of this, then we're into the final design and engineering procurement and construction. And those will go fast on the Lower Crown. Any questions?
Just stop me. I'm just running through. No? Oh, here's the question slide. Here we go.
I'm assuming that means it's the end of the presentation.
It is. I guess it just surprised me there.
Already.
Slides come in and out?
Yes, thank you so much. That was really good, and I hope it clarified this project for people watching at home. I have some hands up. So we'll see, like, there might be questions that, you know, need to go to staff, so we'll see how it goes. But Kate, Director Stanford, sorry, you may go ahead, all the way from Gambier.
Thank you, Chair. Debbie, I may have missed this, but for the interest of the public, did you introduce yourself and what your role is in this project and your experience with these big projects?
Yeah, Justine did it when she started. I'm the Lower Crown project sponsor. So my background, I was a partner in an engineering company for 15 years. Before that, I've done lots in public consultation and engagement. But really, my expertise that people hire me for is the ability to look at projects beyond the technical. So to look at all of the ways, how to fix the public, how the environmental, to knit that all together. Jasmine is the one who does a lot of the intergovernmental. So you'll see more her at the front end and you'll see more of me once we get all the money approved. So that's a little bit of my background. I live on the Sunshine Coast and I am a resident of the SCRD.
Thank you.
Amazing. Thank you. Yes, great question, Director Stanford. Always good to give credit where credit is due. Director Bax.
Thank you. Great presentation. I really particularly like page 15, the tentative schedule. Now, I do have a question about the first item up for bids there on this schedule. Has this lease agreement begun? Has it begun? The lease agreement negotiations?
No, the conversations have not started. We have a few more things that we need to do on our side, in particular, speaking with our DMAP colleagues. We're hoping any day now, they'll be ready to talk to people again since the election is over, but we don't actually know when they are able to do that. And then we'll be able to begin conversations.
And can you tell me who's going to be involved in these negotiations? Is it going to be SCRD staff, federal staff?
No, this is a relationship between SeaShard Nation and the regional district. So it'll be SeaShard Nation, the SeaShard Nation staff and the regional district staff.
Okay, and then they'll bring it to the board for our consideration?
Of course, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Of course. Thank you, Director Bax. Director McMahon.
Yeah, I was just wondering, what was the scope of the GHG emissions study that was required by the federal government? Does that include operations or construction or both?
It included both. We only did it for the Lower Crown because we haven't worked out the alternative reservoir. So it dealt with both. We worked with JDS Engineering and ISC, and then the SCRD also reviewed it also for more comments. It does not follow exactly the way that the SCRD calculates GHG emissions, right? REMCO? Yeah, but it's how they told us we had to calculate it, right? The federal government says this is how you calculate it. If you're sending to them, you have to follow their philosophy. But the SCRD staff were fine with the document that we sent in.
Yes, go ahead, Director McMahon.
So the second reservoir, of course, would require another study. Would there be a possibility that it would be turned down if there were too many GHG emissions?
So reservoirs aren't big GHG emission contributor. The most GHG emissions you get is during construction, right? So they wouldn't be turned down for GHG emissions.
Okay, thank you very much. Director Lee.
Thank you, Chair. I was just wondering a little bit about this public approval process. And what's it related to? Is it related to the plant? Or is there something else I'm not sure of?
Is this a question for our corporate officer? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So the responsibility for public approval will come to the SCRD, and that will be a decision that we will bring to the board in terms of whichever process they choose. And we do make reference in the staff report that follows this delegation.
Yes, so directly, we'll go to staff report, and then if there's further question about the AAP. Do you have another question?
Yeah, just to confirm, it's nothing to do with the DMAP application itself and their requirement to go to the public. It's to do with the funding that's required. Yes, thank you.
No, it has nothing to do with DMAP, but understanding, we can't spend any money because even if we started the studies on the second alternative reservoir, which would be great that we could, and then for some reason, the public decides that it's not going to happen, then we can't get our money back, right? Like, the project has to be complete or you have to pay back any funds you've spent. So I just want everyone to understand that, too. So when we talk about chicken and egg, right, we have to make sure that we're very confident that the project's going to happen because if it stops anyway throughout the process, you have to pay back the money. I just thought I'd put that in there so people understand the seriousness. If we're going forward, we're going forward. And that's why we've broken it and focused on the Lower Crown, and then we would work on the other. Remember the studies we need to do for the alternative, which is a scope change we have in right now. That's why we're not talking about it. It's a scope change we have into DMAP from Waterline. So we can't really talk about the alternative. But it could take two to three years to do the engineering studies to get to being able to consider the alternative reservoir. So I just wanted to say it's chicken and egg on that, too. Did that answer it for you?
I'll just add that the board did provide support for the DMAP application in 2023. So that decision about the DMAP application was made at that time. The decision about going forward, it has a number of other steps that we've outlined today, and so we need to continue the process to receive approval at various levels.
Yes, thank you. And if I understand correctly, there'll be more than one public approval process for the entirety of the two reservoirs. So there's not just one coming. There'll be more than one. Is that something that the CAO wants to confirm?
Yeah, thank you. So I didn't know if you wanted to deep dive into the staff report because we can answer those because, yeah, they're...
Okay, let's hold them off. Let's hold them off. Did you want to follow up or you wanted, Director Lee, or you would like to wait until the staff report?
Thank you, Chair. That was my second question.
Okay. Okay. Well, we'll go to Director Stanford, and after that, if there's no more question, we'll go to the staff report. Director Stanford.
Thank you. It was mentioned briefly in the presentation, but maybe in a bit more detail in the staff report. It's about the spillway, and I noticed that the spillway does increase the capacity of the reservoir, but that it's being looked at at a later date. And I just want to find out a little bit more about that. How much later would the spillway be put in? Because I see the spillway as an important and integral part of the reservoir itself.
Yeah, so we certainly don't need the spillway to construct the Lower Crown reservoir. We can do it in stages. And the spillway is an additional permitting requirement, and so we will have to work likely with our colleagues, both in the provincial government and in the federal government with DFO, to move that along. We did not include it in the initial scope because it will require those additional permits and some additional engineering. And so what we're hope is to do is to construct the Lower Crown reservoir and then seek additional opportunities to maximize it through that piece. We don't have an exact timeline. I would say at least another couple of years. But we really want to maximize the opportunity and move as quickly as we can, given a number of changes and potential increasing pricing, to make sure that we're constructing as soon as possible.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, I don't see any further hands. So let's move on to staff report. Oh, if you could stop sharing the screen, that would be fantastic. All right. And that will be from our CAO, Ms. Barrow.
Thank you, Chair. So the staff report covers a lot of the same information that was covered in the comprehensive presentation by the nation's project team. So thank you very much for that. So just to add and maybe to touch on some of the questions that have arisen already, the purpose of this particular report is really to culminate all the various staff reports and items that have come through the various board committee meetings and that the board approval. So the last one being the water license application, so that's going through process. So the board has given approval, and so we're going through. That was our last undertaking. So essentially, from the public approval process, the board has yet to determine what type of public approval process. Sometimes we have been using an alternative approval process, but the board has not made that decision. So that is still a decision for the board to make as far as what type of undertaking because we may want to undertake a different type of process, which would be a referendum-type style. So we have hit on that particular one. So this is really addressing what are things to come from decision-making. So one of the main purposes of why public approval processes need to be made, especially for this Lower Crown, which is really what we're focusing on today, is because we're going to be entering into long-term capital arrangements. And that's because we are entering into both a long-term land lease agreement as well as significant operational costs. And so what happens with legislation right now is when you enter into long-term agreements of that particular nature, it requires public assent. And so essentially, that is what is the impetus for a public approval process. So because we have both operating costs that are being worked out as well as the land lease, we would want to wait until we had all of those agreements in place, and we would have concurrence before we could be able to prepare what's called a information package to the community. So essentially, those steps need to be done before we can initiate or even ask the question of what we want, because there might be some factors into the types of public approval processes that we'd want to undertake that the board would like to consider. So essentially, that is for the Lower Crown undertaking, and we have already amended our financial plan to recognize the upgrades to the water treatment plan as part of the subsequent project. That was a requirement for some funding, which is quite typical. Granters want to know that you have secured or you have signaled securing funds or have the intention to secure the funds. So we were able to provide that for the nation for some subsequent funding for the project. So we did that later last year. We've also included items within our own budget to support the project that's actually outside of any of the grant funding. So those are being funded through the Regional Water Service. So again, we provide a little bit of information of what we've done for our budget, and that includes additional staff resources for the future. We also will have to do subsequent public approval processes, and I think it's a little early to really talk about what those are going to look like and what form they will until we know more about the subsequent. Those are essentially the two key pieces that we know right now, which is upgrades to our own infrastructure and how we need to fund those. But of course, in that particular staff report, it said we will always look to other sources of funding before we have to go to borrowing. So other than that, if there's any other questions for myself, the corporate officer, technical teams, we're here to answer them. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for this introduction and overview of the report. Very useful. Director Bax, I see your hand up.
I had several questions that the CAO answered very well about what we need to see happen before a decision point comes to us as to what type of public approval we're going to pursue. So the operating costs and the land lease agreements. And so according to the timeline that I see, this could happen before our August break. Is that a possibility?
I'm not sure who can sort of speculate.
Yeah, I think we would all like to get it done as soon as we can. The August break would be ideal. However, there are a number of moving parts between our governments, and so I think that we really need to be thinking more like the fall. But we will certainly continue to provide you with updates as we can, as more information comes in, and work with your team in a way that aligns our two governments. But I don't want to say it will be a particular day in July and be wrong, so I'll just leave it at that.
Always good to, on the conservative side. Yes, sorry?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for that, and I don't mean to put undue pressure upon the parties that are going to be doing these negotiations. But I just, I want everyone to understand that we are ready and willing and able to make these decisions when they come to us.
Okay, thank you, Director Bax. Director Stanford.
Yes, thank you. Is there a timeline where we would have had to look at upgrading the water treatment plant, whether this project is going through or not? Like, was there a plan to upgrade it at what point? How does this change those requirements?
Thank you, Director Stanford. I see Jim Rosenbaum reach for the mic, so.
Thank you, Chair. The Japan treatment plant was built in '04, so it's about 20 years old now. Usually, a plant of this nature has a lifespan of about 50 years. In the meantime, of course, components will need to be upgraded, like the UV system that is currently being replaced. But the entire treatment plant can have a lifespan of another 30 years from now. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification.
I didn't hear that. That wasn't on.
Oh, yeah, the mic was not on.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I was just mentioning that we do not need upgrades to the water treatment plant for the Lower Crown. I just wanted to make sure everyone was clear on that. When we get down the road to the larger alternative reservoir is when we need the changes to the water waste treatment plant.
Okay, now we're all on the same page. Okay, I don't see any more hands from directors. Are we all happy, satisfied? Okay. Oh, wow. Yeah, good for you. Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. Just in the nick of time there. I actually don't have any questions. I did want to say thank you to our delegation for being here today. I want to say thank you to our staff for putting together all of this information in one spot. I know that it's not going to have all of the answers that the community has been asking us about. There is still so much more work to do. There are still so many more answers to figure out and to get to the public. This really is just, you know, us bringing it all together in one spot, what we can talk about to this point. And yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for being here.
Well said. Yes, thank you very much, and I hope that answered a lot of questions that were out there, and more to come. Okay, so with that, we need to accept the report. Receive the report. Have a mover, seconder, all in favor? All right, so that's done. Beautiful. No communications, no new business, no in camera, so that takes us straight to adjournment. That's moved, seconded, all in favor of adjournment? Perfect. And thank you very much. Now it's time for, right, questions from the gallery. We have members of the public in the gallery. Please come to the mic if you have a question for the board.
Hello. My name's Tom Beck. I live in Seashell. I'd just like to understand a little... Or through the chair. I'd just like to understand a little more about the upgrades to the water treatment plant. You said an interesting thing that upgrades would not be required for just the small Lower Crown, but then upgrades will be required if the larger reservoir is built. Can you just clarify that for me? Like, what do these upgrades actually do and how, and why don't you need them for the lower crown, but you need them for the bigger one up top? Through the chair.
Yes, would staff like to answer that question? Or, yeah, okay. Thank you, Jim Rosenbaum.
Thank you. The potential capacity, potential demand for the community might exceed the current maximum capacity of the treatment plant at the time when the lower ground, when the second reservoir is actually being used. So it's all about that at some point, we... The community is growing, and we might hit the maximum capacity of the treatment plant. So at that time, it could be required that we add capacity to the treatment plant. So the upgrades would not be to upgrade component to the existing treatment plant, but to increase the capacity of the overall treatment plant.
So it has nothing to do, through the chair, has nothing to do with water quality in the reservoirs? It's about volume going through the treatment?
Yes, correct.
Okay, that's interesting. Now, the second question I have, and it's for the board, I suppose. Paul Nash was in here last year, October or something, and I listened to his presentation. And in the big picture, if we think 50 years in the future, whatever, I don't know whether he was right or wrong, but he talked about the water need for the area actually being four, five, six million cubic meters at the time, if you recall his presentation, to solve our global water problem. Now, if he's correct, the combined capacity of these two reservoirs is how much? Ballpark.
The Lower Crown is 800,000 cubic meter. We can say that the alternative reservoir is probably double the size or bigger. But remember, we haven't done all the work on the alternative thing.
I understand.
Right, but it's double the size or a little bit.
So in a ballpark, if you're lucky, you get to two and a half or three or something like that. Fair?
Yeah.
So if Paul Nash was correct, then this project, and I'm all in support of this project, this project really does not yet solve the 50-year water issue for the Sunshine Coast. And if that's correct, then my question back through the chair to whoever I'm talking to is, has the regional district then abandoned or feel that you no longer will have to be looking at your previous proposed reservoirs up the hill? Like, will this take that off the table, or are we coming to a point in 25 years or whatever where we'll need more water than this, and we'll be back to looking potentially at reservoirs up the hill?
Okay, good question. And I know the board chair would like to answer.
Thank you. I think it's fair to say that, you know, from a holistic overview of, you know, water supply to the community, that nothing is actually off the table yet. We do still have a draft water strategy that needs to be adopted by the board. Part of that water strategy is going to look at what our actual demands are anticipated to be in the community for the next 20 years. And, you know, part of the work this year is that SCRD staff are advancing work on the Langdale Well Field. So like, there is still work being done. There are still things progressing. And I think that's something that we've, we recognize, you know, with climate change, with the changes that are coming to Chapman Creek through, you know, warming and not being able to rely on the creek as much. I think it's fair to say that, you know, we are not really ever going to stop looking for water for the region, you know. And that work will continue to move on, whether that's additional reservoirs or whether it's additional wells or other sources entirely, I think is all still to come.
Thank you. So my follow-up to that is, through the chair, responding to Alton's point, if the additional water to come would come through additional well fields, for example, that's one thing. My concern, and I'm just thinking about this, if the additional water that was required beyond these reservoirs turned out to be returning to the plan for the reservoirs up the hill, if-if hypothetically, my concern is that, and I'm sure you know this, these reservoirs will be very expensive to run on a cost-per-cubic-meter basis because on the capital side, the pumping infrastructure and the pipeline going up there is probably 25% of the cost of this thing, and then you're into a yearly pumping cost and operations cost. And when I think about your reservoirs up the hill, there was no pumping cost because they would be gravity flow back down to your, to your water treatment plant, and the capital cost on them would not require the pumping infrastructure and the pipeline that these will require. And so when I think about that, just thinking about it, if you had $117 million to spend, and you spent it on that up the hill, you would get a way bigger bang for your buck building the reservoir for $117 million on the hill without 25 or 30 million bucks going into the pumping infrastructure, and your yearly operational costs would be considerably lower than this project. And so I just want to put that in the context of, this doesn't solve our problem. And I won't be alive in 25 years, but if I was, and then you came to us, to the taxpayer, and said, oh, now we want to build the reservoirs up the hill that were way cheaper to run, I would have said, how come you didn't build them in the first place instead of this project? And I'm not opposed to this project, right? That's just, that's just kind of something I got thinking about.
Through the chair.
Oh, yeah, Ms. Hansby, if you'd like to... Oh, in the microphone.
Through the chair and using a microphone. That's why we've said the alternative reservoir. So what I would like to say to you, keep posted for the alternative reservoir. Remember, we're not doing Waterline anymore.
What did you mean by Waterline?
Waterline was the second reservoir.
Oh.
And we've changed our strategy there. We can't talk about it because it's in front of DMAP to accept that scope change, because when they gave us the funding opportunity, it was on Waterline and Lower Crown. We found out that Waterline wasn't feasible, maybe for some of the reasons you said or not, and so we've looked at an alternative. So what I would say is, once we have the scope change approved, I think you'll be happy.
I was confused. I thought your alternative was the second large one down in the pit.
Yeah, no, that's why I wanted to deal with this.
So where... What does alternative look like?
So the one, the second one in the pit is a no-go now. So that's why we're talking about the alternative reservoir, and that's why I was alluding to the studies we need to do. And as you can remember, there's been lots of studies done on the best place for a bigger reservoir. So we'll, soon as we get approval from DMAP, to talk about where this alternative reservoir is, then all of the concerns that you've brought forward, we're taking into consideration when we were looking at where this alternative reservoir could be.
So alternative reservoir could be the one up the hill?
It could be. For today, we're here to talk about Lower Crown.
The Lower Crown, but I just wanted to give some context. The major context is we're not doing Waterline anymore, and that's the main point I want to get out. It can't happen, so we're looking at alternatives, working with the SCRD, looking over here, working with the staff. But we cannot, we have put it for a scope change on the DMAP application to allow us to change the position. So once that gets approved, then we can give our thoughts of where the alternative is.
Well, that clarifies a lot.
Hopefully, that'll help you sleep at night.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Hansby. Any further questions from the gallery? Oh, yes, sorry, Director Ingster, you had your hand up.
You know, over the next number of years, there'll be constant planning on the water area. I remember, and I know some people love my "I remember" speeches, but when we walked through the water treatment plant a number of years ago, and there's not a lot of people there, I think, politically involved, but I was then, and when we went through that water treatment plant, we thought it was a solution for a long time. And it looked like a lot of water, and a lot of money was spent on it. A lot of money came from external sources to spend on that. And now we're talking about a larger water plant. Coupled with that, we're seeing, and we all know this because the chair mentioned climate change, we're seeing a high evaporation rate based on, I believe, nine of the last 12 years being the hottest recorded years on record, which has concerns about firefighting as well as the amount of water that evaporates before we can treat it and drink it and put it aside for our population for that firefighting. So we've got a lot of climate issues that need adaptation. And that is a formula that we don't know now because of the adaptation models that will change over the next few years with the amount of evaporation through heat change. And people know that it's getting hot in the planet. There's some deniers, but if you look at the statistics, it says that there's a high evaporation rate. I think people also know that a previous board looked for funding for a reservoir, and that was what a number of people were hanging their hat on, was other, another reservoir and a couple of reservoirs, and the money wasn't approved. So once we knew that wasn't approved, the board had to move towards wells and was able to put some money and some determination in order to create some well, water, subsurface wells, which is less expensive than a reservoir in order to provide water as a stopgap, until we come back to the collaboration with our partners to secure the large amount of funding, which will create the larger reservoirs which weren't envisioned before with less funding that wasn't approved. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Ingster. Okay, I think we got it. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Jasmine and Debbie, for coming. Great to have you here.
Looking forward to the next update.
We sure do. Looking forward to the next one. Thank you. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you so much.